The insurance industry is experiencing a hardening of the market, something that it really might not have experienced since probably the 1980s, which led really to the development of GIPS to begin with. The increases are expected in all facets of the insurance. For property, it's increasing natural disasters, hurricanes, floods and fires and what have you. The liability part of it increasing during the awards for minimal cases. There's even some erosion of some Title 59 immunities that we've always enjoyed over the years, law enforcement liability. For the cyber liability, there's an increasing number of high-profile cyber events and the cost to recoup is very heavy with ransoms and what have you. In fact, next year, there's probably going to be a whole new GIP just to handle the cyber part of it. So at Central Jersey Town in Mercer County, I just learned their GIP raised their rates eight percent this year. And our GIP at the retreat we had back well, last month, they're talking about anywhere from seven to nine percent, eight to 10 percent have been mentioned too. So I think my point here was if you want me to go forth and prepare this resolution for one of the next two meetings, I think it's got to be more global than just insurance. You know, from a briefing we had with the Director of Local Government Services, you know, trash is going up and escalating rates. The insurances, workers' compensation is going up very, very high. Pension, health insurances, fuel, everything. But I think we should make, if you're interested in pursuing this resolution, I would just make it more than just about insurance, about the whole municipal experience. So that's all I had about that.
And this isn't, the action that taken doesn't really do anything for us, it's more of a symbolic.
What you're doing is you're adopting a resolution, you're sending it to your legislators, you're sending it to the GIP, you're sending it to everybody, asking them, asking the legislators to provide cap relief legislatively for the next coming fiscal year.
Do you have any questions, Council?
I saw, go ahead and prepare something then, it's present, okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking, because I guess there is, I know that healthcare costs are outside of that.
A portion of it, yes, yes.
Would this bring us issue, we need outside of the cap for some of these items?
It's not granting anything, we're lobbying.
We're lobbying, yeah, that's what we're looking for.
Instead of having like, you know what, it could come in a couple of different ways. It could be, they could say that the, we're going to raise the 2% levy cap to 2.5% this year, or they're going to keep it at two, but they're going to provide wiggle room in other areas like trash, like insurance, even salaries and wages, who knows? So it could look many different ways.
Okay. Doesn't hurt us, no.
Lobbying.
Okay. Everyone good? Well, Joe, you can prepare that for the next meeting?
Yep.
Great. And next up is our county municipal joint insurance fund renewal. Joe, you have anything to discuss with this? I know you prepared, sent us a report, is there anything you want to discuss further?
No, I just shot a couple of notes down, but if you're, if everybody is good with what I wrote, that's good enough for me. I just really think, I agree with what Hardenberg says that, you know, our GIP appears to be the best option. The commercial carriers, they won't provide really cyber liability, they will not provide workers' comp. No GIP will want you for just workers' comp, there's no such thing as a workers' comp GIP. So I don't want to say your feet are tied, but, you know, and the Mel, I wouldn't suggest another GIP because the Mel, which the Burco is part of, is very, you know, highly renowned and one of the pay setters in that industry. Very deep in training in all facets.
Yeah, we've had no issues with the GIP, so I don't think there's any reason to change it unless we want it to pay off the nose to do that. Everybody okay with that? Yeah, so Joe, this gets renewed for another, what, three years?
Well, they're going to come in, they're going to come in at the end of July, the July workshop, I believe it was scheduled for, right, Jamie? And they're going to talk about options, they're going to, you know, talk about the market like we just talked about a few minutes ago. In fact, they may even have more current information in another month's time, so.
Great. Any questions, Council? Thank you, Joe, for that update memo. So there's no other work session items, so at this time, I'll entertain motions to approve Resolution 2022-125, authorizing executive discussion to discuss the following, there's an amendment. So one, attorney-client privilege, two, litigation and contract negotiation regarding affordable housing, and three, contract negotiations regarding the Delran Trollman's Association.
Motion.
Jamie, did you call the roll please for Resolution 2022-125?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Barrow?
Hi. The ayes have it, the resolution carries. So at this time, we will go into an executive session and ask everyone to leave their room, we'll shut the doors behind us and keep this brief as possible and then come back for the rest of our meeting. So we will take a two-minute recess just to get prepared.
I'm doing online.
I want to see if I can see it.
Everybody again? We're back on the record. All right, we're back on the record from our closed session, so now we'll take our action items and then have our public comment. So first, we have an ordinance on first reading. This is ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash fourteen, authorizing the execution of a contract, the sale of the township of Delran, to convey, to convey the affordable housing unit at one three-three Box Glove Drive. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
Jamie, could you call the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it. The ordinance is introduced. Next up is ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash fifteen. This is establishing salaries for various employees in the township of Delran, county of Burlington, state of New Jersey, and regulating the manner of payment of the same. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Jamie, could you call the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it. The ordinance is introduced. Next up is our consent agenda, which includes resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one fifteen, all the way to resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one twenty-four and various other motions. Are there any objections to the items within the consent agenda? Counsel, seeing none objections, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion? Motion approved. I'll second.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it. The motion carries and the resolutions and motions within the consent agenda are adopted. That includes our action portion, right, Jamie?
Yep.
I'm not missing anything. There's so many pages going on. Okay. Great. So we did our work session. Now we have reports. First up is a report from our township administrator, Ms. Bellina.
No report, Mr. President. I covered everything in the workshop session.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Next is our clerk, Jamie Eggers. Any reports for us this evening?
I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our mayor, who is not with us tonight. This is under the weather. Next up is our solicitor, Mark. Have a pen, Mark. If you could, fire red if you want to talk. And you have any report?
I do not wish to talk.
Okay.
No good for it.
Thank you. Next up is our engineer, Jim Winkowski. Jim, anything?
I'm pleased to report that Chester Avenue was finally resurfaced, so that's good. And they should be finishing the striping in the next few days.
There's a question I got from resident about the, if you come out here and make a right, the drainage dip is pretty low. Is that, if you look in, does that ring any bell?
I'll take a look on my way out.
Great, thank you. Okay. Then, Jim, we have reports from members of council. So starting on my far right, this is councilman Marlo Smith.
Yes, the quick report. Just wanted to, you know, make a report that one of my neighbors, a longtime resident of Delran, Ms. Jeanette Volby, passed away. She was ninety-six years old during COVID times. We actually had a parade for her when she turned ninety-five. So wonderful lady. Definitely will miss her. Always knew what season it was because she would put up the flags, you know, for either the Phillies or Eagles. So, you know, I didn't need to know what time of year it was. Just looked across the street and see her flag. I knew what time of year it was. So great lady. She will be missed. And, you know, a lot of our, my neighbors are all, you know, all celebrating our life. So just wanted to make mention of that this evening, and that's the end of the report.
Great. Thank you. Next up, we have councilman Lynn. Jenny, councilman?
Council president, I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, our vice president, councilman Tom Lyon. He's the vice president.
Thank you, council president. Like to say congratulations to all the graduates, both high school and college. It's always a great accomplishment. Hats off to them and good luck in their future endeavors. And I'd like to say thanks to Joe Bellina and a lot of the other staff. I had to make a few phone calls on a couple of issues, and they addressed them rather quickly. And they're getting back with the residents. And I gotta, already gotta thank you from one of the residents. So I appreciate that, Joe, and the rest of the staff. That's it.
Great. Thank you. I have no report this evening either. But before we go into public comments, I do, Mark, there's a statement that wanted to be made about the, yes? Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I missed the.
I still don't have the red is on and white is off thing. So inquiries were received regarding the Carly Lloyd event. So the public is aware an investigation has been opened, and the township has and is fully and completely cooperating with the investigation. We are eagerly awaiting its conclusion. Until such time as the matter is concluded, however, any further dialogue about this matter will only tend to frustrate the purposes of the investigation, and that is not in anyone's best interest for that to happen. During the pendency of the investigation, with all due respect, no further comment will be made by this body. When the investigation concludes, the township will comment as it deems appropriate at that time, and the public will, of course, be fully advised of the outcome of this investigation. So I appreciate your understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for summarizing that for us. Appreciate your diligence handling that. All right, so with that, still no other reports or comments. I'll ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's opposed. Motion carries. Our floor is now open to public comment. Brief summary of the rules. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. You will be recognized. That time you may approach our brand new microphone at the podium, state your name and address for the record. All remarks should be addressed to council. An individual speaker is allotted five minutes of time, and all statements are a part of public record, both written, video, and audio recorded, and cannot be redacted or retracted after the fact. So with that, is there any members of public question, comment?
How you doing? John Harper, Riverside Park. I missed a meeting last week. I've asked twice about the actual engineer report. Nobody's emailed me. Nobody's contacted me. I've given email addresses at three times. I never did, wanted to come up here and do it. I figured I'd come to these guys personally. After the meeting, I've got nowhere with it. What happened with the meeting last week with the Army Corps of Engineers?
Joe or Jim, can you just give a quick summary?
Was it videotaped? I can watch?
It's not videotaped.
Okay. I didn't know how it was, how it went down. I just couldn't make it.
Oh, that's okay.
I didn't even know about it. I just happened to see the letter that was in the pile that I had, and I'm like, I missed.
Residents were notified via mail.
Yeah, it wasn't on, it wasn't online, so you could see, like, on your schedule. Because if it was, I would've came.
Gotcha. Would you like a quick summary?
Yeah, just a quick.
Yeah, I mean.
Where we're at.
Yeah, the meeting last week was from select members of council. I think only two, two members of the council, myself and Joe, and the residents who were from Riverside Park. No Army Corps was here, but we just gave an update on the process with Army Corps. Right now, we do have a project that we're working together with them on. We're entering in what we're called the preliminary concept development, the preliminary design phase, which they, basically, the federal government, in conjunction with Army Corps, have agreed to take on the project, that they, that it's, it's there, it's, they're interested to do so, and that they funded the, the concept development phase, and the township has to, you know, partner with them on that and come up with their own portion of the money. It's about a $400,000 study. We're funding $200,000 of that. And then so, once we enter those formal agreements to execute and move forward to the next phase, it's gonna take about a year, year and a half to finalize that phase, which would hopefully produce a proposed project and specific improvements to, to be done to actually, to do stream bank stabilization along River Drive. It's not for flood control, but it's simply for erosion control at this point. And at that meeting last week, we also discussed the flooding issues, why it's happening, what are some of the fixes, we believe, and some of the challenges to, you know, meeting those fixes. It was a pretty long meeting. I would be happy to give you my information, and I can set up a meeting separately at a separate time and go over the specifics with you. I don't know how, how much you want me to go through tonight.
Yeah, I understand. I only got a little bit of time. But I mean, I've lived there my whole life, and it's been the same problem. It's never gone away. And I just think that, you know, even before we even go there, you know, there has to be a land survey. Nobody can sit here and exactly tell me what's the lowest spot in that whole area. It's, you know.
We have, we have, we have, we have topographic data. We do have an understanding of all the elements through there.
It's been updated in the past five years.
It depends where you look at. The answer is yes.
Well, basically, from Chester Avenue all the way through Riverside Marina. Because after you, after you guys did Stewart Avenue, the water don't come over the bank. Last time it flooded, it came through Riverside Marina.
Well, it came through Riverside?
Yes, it did. It came, it came clear across the parking lot through Riverside Marina.
Oh, yeah.
And, and entered Norman Avenue that way.
Yeah.
But there was already standing water because of the rain. That's ninety percent of the problem is standing water and the rain, and that's why it floods. It's technically flooding because the water can't go anywhere because the tide is up.
Yeah, that, that, that.
We all heartily agree.
Yeah, those are scenarios we discussed, and those are the challenges we face, because it's a gravity issue. You know, you know, the, the areas of Riverside Park, River Drive, portions of Stewart and Norman, even Old and, especially in front of the treatment plant, aren't the lowest. And the river, at certain times, at certain peaks, is higher in elevation than the, the lands of that area. So when it rains locally, the water can't evacuate, and that's why we have the flooding. And to fix that is an enormous challenge. You need levees, pump stations, you know, holding basins, and, you know, the homes that we're trying to protect would have to be wiped out just to build this stuff. And that, that's one of the things we, we went over.
Yeah, I just, you know, as a taxpayer living there, and, I mean, everybody I've grown up with, some live there, some moved, and, you know, we've lived there, and it's, we've lived on every day. So I just want to see, you're gonna put two hundred thou, you know, two hundred thousand, just for a study, you know, we, let's make your study worthwhile, not just saying, hey, we want to buy these houses up, but nothing gets done. Because now we're just, you know.
That's not the objective. The objective of just, what we're working with the Army Corps is erosion control along the bank, specifically erosion control, and there's also our sewer plant that's there as well, right?
Yes.
That's, the Army Corps is looking at all of that. We're not talking about the flooding that you're talking about on the streets, that from the rainwater. That's not a part of this at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, the, the biggest problem was, is when they were, when they allowed, I don't know who exactly it was, but Amaco Seand and Gravel to put the pipes there. You know, in the late, late seventies, they put pipes there so they could access Amaco Island, which was always an island, to pull the gravel and sell it. And that's what started a lot of the water rising, not water rising, but the, the silt problem. And the marinas, everything. Used to be able to leave Riverside Marina in a boat and go right into Rancoas Creek and vice versa. And now, if I'm not mistaken, that was in seventy-four.
Yes, that, that's, that's all the stuff we saw. The three problems over there. We started with two problems, was the flooding and the erosion, and then the third problem came along with our discussion, since the semination. So, yeah, I mean, I can get you my information, or I can get yours and reach out to you, and I would love to go with you, with you in more detail.
Yeah, I just kind of like to know what's going on. That's all they said.
The more history we can get about what's going on over there, what people have seen, the better.
Yeah. If you could touch base, Jim, give you his card afterwards.
Do you, do you have his information?
Yeah, they have my information. Phone number, two emails, everything.
Yeah, can you just come up and give them your information real quick? There's a lot of moving parts, so don't want to miss. Thanks, Jim. Thanks. Any other questions or comments from the public? Please raise your hand. Slowly.
That's a long mic. Barb Littleton, live here in Delran. So I have a couple of questions. So last time we were talking, Tyler, we talked a little bit about the, the meeting minutes and how long it takes to get them approved. And if I heard you correctly, I don't want to put words in your mouth, a lot of the issues recently is because of, of the Oprah request. But isn't this a problem that we've had ongoing for years, getting those meeting minutes approved?
If you want to couch it that way, you're more than welcome to couch it that way.
I'm just asking.
My number one priority is not to get the minutes up. I'm trying to keep the town running forward. So.
I totally understand.
Jamie has a lot going on, so this is deputy clerk. So they have to do prioritize what is more important, keeping things moving along the tracks, rather than making sure the minutes are up to date. And we've all sat through the last eight months, so you know it's been pretty turbulent.
Yeah. I, I was just wondering, this is a problem that's been going on for the last five years or so, getting the minutes done. Am I correct?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have that assessment, but that's how you want to define it.
Thank you. So last time, we also talked about the business administrator position. And I don't think I quite got an understanding of why we were okay with going part-time and not full-time with that position. Was full-time not an option? Or do we not need a full-time person? Did we need a part-time person then, and we were having a full- Or do we not need a full-time person? Did we need a part-time person then, and we were having a full-time person? I'm trying to understand.
The problem, I frankly don't understand what the controversy is with it, frankly, because we're finding efficiencies in government, right, in productivity and saving us money. There's two things that I think anyone, no matter what side of the aisle you're on, find efficient. So I don't know what's controversial about that, right?
Well, did we need it before, full-time?
We're constantly retooling, reevaluating, and innovating, right? Just because we've done something for 40 years one way doesn't mean we have to make that same decision in a vacuum again.
I totally agree.
We're doing this for two years, right? Joe has been doing a fantastic job for us. If at any point we're actively monitoring, the administrative is actively monitoring, if there's an issue, we address the issue, right? If services drop, we address the issue, but, you know, services are being maintained, if not improving. We're finding efficiencies. We're saving hundreds, $100,000 in benefits and the like, so I don't understand what's controversial about.
So do you see that happening going forward after Joe's not here anymore?
I don't know what's... In two years, who the applicant pool will be, or if Joe's going to stay around, or if Joe's going to leave, or whatnot. I mean, I...
Because that's our concern, is looking at it and saying, okay, we had a full-time one. Were we overpaying then? And now we have a part-time one, and we only needed a part-time one, or is it the opposite? We needed a full-time one, but we settled for the part-time. But you answered the question, so thank you so much. That was where we were coming from. So I did have a question. Who is investigating the Carley? Do we know that? And then also, when that was open or when the council was notified of that?
Mark, if you just want to go by...
The Comptroller's Office from the State of New Jersey is investigating the Carley Lloyd event. We were retained for the township of Delran, I believe, in, I would say, January or maybe early February. It was one of... Among the first things that we did was the collection and uploading, if you will, of information to the Comptroller's Office.
Okay.
We've cooperated. We will continue to cooperate. We have not heard from them for a while, and we're just waiting and eager for them to finish whatever it is that they're doing. If they have anything more to ask of us, we will, of course, cooperate.
So the next question I have is about the EMS. I believe, and please forgive me if I'm a little bit off, because this predates me, that Chuck McSweeney is temporary in his position over at EMS, or is that a full-time position?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't... Joe, do you know the answer to that?
I do not.
He was a part of a... There was a settlement agreement with the state, the licensing board. I'm using broad terms here because I don't know the actual legal term of art, but he was put in place as an oversight. There's some agreement that was involved with that.
Is that a township thing, or is that above the township?
That's involved with the state licensing, yeah. Broad terms there. That may not be the correct term of art.
I won't hold you accountable.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions about some emails in the OPA requests recently.
All right, we're getting to our time, so.
Yes. These are the last two questions I have. So we have some emails from Gary from Cortana@Microsoft.com, and then we also have one from Gary at a Mark email address. Are council members and township employees allowed to use their personal email to do township business?
The answer to that is likely no, but what you're referring to is likely spam phishing emails. I'm trying to remember the OPA request that came in, but some of those are spam phishing.
Because it went to Virginia, and then...
Yes, it went to... One went to Virginia, and one went to me. There's phishing that goes on all the time.
I'm an IT person, and normally phishing, there's something that they're trying to gain, and that didn't look like a phishing attempt.
I can assure you it's a phishing attempt.
Because it just doesn't play well with what I know about IT, so.
I promise you that's a phishing attempt.
Yeah. So the Cortana@Microsoft.com, is that the same? I guess we ask for...
Broadly speaking, I understand them to be phishing attempts, yes.
Both of those, to be phishing? Okay. Thank you so much.
That's not... That's not Gary's personal email address.
So one other thing that I would say is Virginia responded to the one that she got, so definitely look into your... If it was phishing, if you guys are really sure it was phishing, look into your training, because that should have... I mean, that jumped out to me the first thing. It was coming from Gary, but that was not his email address. She should have never responded to that email address, so that says that there's a training issue there. Thank you so much.
Duff?
Yes.
Back again.
I love this town. I do.
You're always welcome.
Got family here, got a lot of friends here. My name is Patrick Duff, and I am a nomadic warrior who likes to travel around the state of New Jersey and try to help people, in a sense, right? Here I want to help. By the way, I mean, that... What a cop-out tonight. To say that you can't answer questions due to an investigation that was started back in February, but tonight you just... When Patrick Duff shows back up, you just can't answer any more questions? That's a cop-out. Let's just ask a simple question here. I mean, because it's pretty easy to think about this. On your bill list, it says that you paid at least $17,000 to hire Mr. Bellina. Is there any other costs associated, or is that just the bill list for this month for that, or is there other costs associated?
I'm not sure about the specific cost you're referencing unless I look at it.
Yeah.
We retained when our previous administrator retired. While we were looking for applicants, there was no applicant that applied or anyone. I don't think anyone applied, right? And then we retained a... What's the name of the firm, Government?
The name of the firm is Government Strategies Incorporated.
Government Strategies Incorporated. Two roles. One was to put it in a temporary position, Jeff's position, and then two was to recruit, and they did both of those roles, and that's likely what you're referring to.
Yeah, so, and the reason why I say this, and I own businesses, a bunch of you folks actually own businesses. If I... And I have a restaurant. I have a nightclub. I would never hire a part-time manager. You're the town manager. You're supposed to be the one that watches everything that goes on here. Now, if you had a part-time manager at a restaurant, how successful do you think that restaurant would be? How about a Target? Part-time manager at a Target? Not a chance, okay? People would walk all over every single manager in that building because the actual manager is not there. Now, you have admitted that the last eight months have been hell, basically, because of bad administration, bad, bad, let's say, calls by Sal, right? Literally, I just got a letter unredacted that proved everything I said. It said that the Dunphy case, the filing of it, was frivolous, that it should have never been filed in the first place, but the township wound up paying 300K at it, you know? So, quick question, Mr. Bellina, because now you're here. Have you looked into the Dunphy investigation at all and to see what happened? And if the township filed the insurance on time or not?
Mr. Duff, the...
Are we not allowed to talk about that, too?
No, I'm happy to talk about that, sir.
I don't think there's a reason to be adversarial, but...
You were adversarial to Barb, I'll tell you that.
Mark, if you could please take a short...
Not adversarial, sir. So prerogative writ was filed by an applicant whose application for zoning approval was denied. Dunphy. A prerogative writ is the mechanism by which someone files in Superior Court to challenge municipal action. A prerogative writ is never covered by insurance. It's an exclusion under the JIF. It's just not covered, not just in Delran, but literally nowhere.
Did you see... So when did Delran contact the insurance company?
The plaintiff prevailed on that action and then communicated with the township asserting a number of new claims and seeking seven figures in compensation. No lawsuit was ever filed. The township carefully considered plaintiff's demands and rather deal than deal with a very expensive, protracted piece of litigation, made an informed decision to engage in pre-litigation settlement discussions with plaintiffs at council. There's nothing unusual about...
Can I ask you though, when they were in these discussions, who was having the discussions?
Counsel for plaintiff and counsel for...
Alcelessiano, who is also the counsel for the planning board, correct?
I can't speak to that.
Yes, he was. So he was negotiating his own settlement?
Incorrect.
That's correct. You just said it. Who was negotiating the settlement?
Sir.
Who was negotiating it?
The former town solicitor and the former business administrator acted in good faith. They did so in...
Did they contact the insurance in time?
With all of their professional obligations, and they communicated with the township's insurance company.
When?
The township... Counsel was remained fully appraised of all the claims and settlement efforts. The parties reached an arm's-length resolution. There was no admission of any or any finding of any wrongdoing by anyone whatsoever.
Did the insurance deny the claim?
Insurance made a contribution towards...
Did the insurance deny the claim? So if nobody made a mistake...
Made a contribution.
They denied it at first, correct?
The party reached an amicable resolution.
Can you stop reading that? And, I mean, this is ridiculous. Can I have my... My time has been yielded, hopefully, and let me...
Your time has almost expired, so.
Well, he's spoken for most of the time. Come on now. Come on now.
Setting at a public vote, at a public meeting, at which time at least one councilperson made a public statement about the settlement. Members of the community may believe that it was too much money was spent. I'm sure a plaintiff would think otherwise.
It's not about the money spent.
Business or not, let him finish, and then we'll let you have some pleading thoughts, okay? To be fair. Done. Are you... I think I'm done for the moment.
So I'll tell you how.
You're over five, if we can...
The insurance company says that Delran should have contacted them when the prerogative writ was filed, but you didn't. The township not only didn't contact them when the prerogative writ was filed, they didn't contact them until March 12th of 2021, after there was already closed session meetings discussing the settlement, after there's already settlement negotiations. The reason why the insurer says that they denied the claim is because it was not filed on time. And the reason why they made a contribution, quote-unquote, "kickback," was because the township threatened litigation or go to arbitration over the denial of the claim. So to say nothing was done wrong, if it wasn't done wrong, there would be no denial of the claim. If there was nothing done wrong, you'd not pay $300,000 to somebody. That's ridiculous. And to state, and I'm going to finish this off, to state that you cannot have conversations tonight, as I show up for the first time in three, four months, about the Carley Lloyd event, about the bid splitting... Listen, the mayor is the one that promised he was going to answer the questions on bid splitting, on hiring his nephew. By the way, you just hired somebody else. Don't call me Francis. Went through Alex Glover. Isn't that right?
I did not.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
I think he's their manager. But to finish, this is just in finishing.
Yeah.
For me to show up here for the first time in three months and you to say that, to say that, you know, there's now investigation going on, and then admit the investigation's been going on since February, what a cop-out, man! And then to read a prepared statement and not answer the questions? The insurer was not contacted on time. That's why it was denied. The taxpayers footed the bill of $300,000, and they should have never had to do that.
But it's your opinion, sir, and you're entitled to it.
That is the facts.
I disagree.
Sue me. Sue me.
I don't need to see that.
Thank you.
You can't, because it's the facts.
Any other comment from members of the public? Seeing none of those people here, I'll ask for a motion to close the floor to the public. Second. Anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.